Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, January 9th, 2014, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall. Call to order?
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Present.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
The records show that Commissioners Munir and Reinhardt are absent.
At this point, thank you. At this point, we would like to adopt the agenda. Anyone move to adopt the agenda? A second? A second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Now, Item D, the consent calendar. Approval of draft action minutes. First is September 12th, 2013, regular meeting. Any changes?
I have no changes.
And done. All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to adopt the draft action minutes of September 12th, September 26th, October 10th, and November 14th.
A second.
Just a point of order. When you have a consent calendar, you can adopt all items on a single motion if you're so inclined. Just bring that up for the chairman's consideration.
All right. Then moving on to September 26th, 2013, regular meeting. Any changes? No.
No.
All right. Moving on to October 10th, 2013, regular meeting.
I have no changes.
No. And November 14th, 2013?
I have no changes.
No. All right. At this time, would someone like to make a motion?
All right. I'll do it again. Make a motion to accept the draft action minutes of September 12th, September 26th, October 10th, and November 14th.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is adoption of report on 8 Thomas Avenue. Adoption of the report to the City Council on the appeal of Planning Commission's approval of design permit, DP 113, and grading permit, EX 113, for development of approximately 5,110 square feet, single-family home with associated grading of approximately 1,850 cubic yards on a ridge-lined lot within the RBA Brisbane Acres zoning district. Maquet, applicant-owner, APN 007350340. Staff?
This is a consent item as well, so if you have questions for staff, I'm happy to take them. But essentially, this is, this report serves as a cover for the materials that the Planning Commission previously has seen. The minutes which you just approved as well, so staff reports and the various correspondence. So the second page of this serves as essentially a cover. And the rest of those materials will be attached to the City Council report when it goes to City Council.
Just a point of clarification. Whenever a planning commission item is appealed, the recommendation of the commission is appealed to the City Council. The municipal code requires that a report from the Planning Commission be prepared, which basically is just a, as Ken mentioned, is just a summary of the record that was presented to you as part of your deliberations. And so this is really kind of what we consider a formality. It's, we're not, it's not a new hearing, it's not a new meeting, it's, we're not taking any new testimony. All you're doing is basically looking at the record, forwarding it onto the council for their consideration.
And then this DP 113 appeal, which we just received, so we should look at it at this point? Is that what you're saying?
The appeal? It's, what you have is a letter from a resident, Luke Burchard, who spoke at the two hearings. And so this is just his letter that he's addressing to City Council. So that is just a communication to you for information. But that will be included in City Council's report when they review this.
All right. Do you know when the appeal will be up for on the agenda?
It hasn't been set for hearing yet, no.
Question on paragraph two. This report, in response to the appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of the above referenced application.
The approval. It's approval of the above referenced application. Hold on, wrong page. Okay. We'll change that first.
Thanks, Ken. That's what I was talking about the other day.
Yeah, and I couldn't find that one.
I was out with the fairies.
Thank you.
Really good to know I'm not, well, right now. Thank you.
None.
None for me. So at this point, would anyone like to make a motion?
Do you make a motion on this?
To adopt, right? I make a motion that we adopt the report on 8 Thomas Avenue.
With the corrections?
With the amendments.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we have oral communications, a limit to a total of 15 minutes. I see no one, so I will close the oral communications and move on to written communications. So we have something from Heart of San Mateo, and also a letter from, as we spoke about it earlier, from Susan Burchard. And I think that's it. And now, Item G, items initiated by staff?
Want me to talk about the, 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 the first thing, a couple of things. One is, as was noted on your agenda, that the City Council did ultimately authorize the partnership with Urban Land Institute to do a technical assistance panel for Crocker Park. And as part of that process, there's going to be a pretty well-developed stakeholder interview process. And the council, in sort of authorizing the, in sort of defining the stakeholders to be interviewed, requested that a panel to be interviewed would consist of all four of the city advisory bodies, which would be a Planning Commission member, open space and ecology, park and rec commission, and complete streets committee member. So, so at this point, I'm soliciting basically the commission to designate a representative to sit on, as the commission representative on that stakeholder panel. The interviews will be held the morning of Tuesday, the 28th, I believe. I believe that's the date of January. It'll be somewhere in a block of time between 9:00 and noon. I don't have the specific time yet. But with that, I'd throw it open for the commission's consideration and deliberation, and answer any questions you might have about the process.
Thank you.
And, oh, by the way, I think when I had indicated this previously, Commissioner Cunningham had expressed interest in participating on behalf of the commission, so I'll make sure that was in the record as well.
You said, I'm sorry, 9:00 to 12:00, right?
It'll be sometime, I don't think you're part of it, the commission, that the stakeholder panel will only be an hour, but I don't know if it'll be at 9:00, or 10:00, or 11:00, or sometime in between. But, and then the other part will be, it's a two-day program. The stakeholder interviews Tuesday morning, and then Wednesday afternoon, the panel will actually make their preliminary recommendations. So there'll be an opportunity for the stakeholders to, to observe while the, while the committee makes their preliminary recommendation. So that would come in on Wednesday afternoon, later on Wednesday afternoon, like 4:00.
And that's open to the public, or just the people who?
I think that'll be open to the public as well. We haven't really figured out all the details on that particular, and, you know, we're still working out some of the details for the scheduling, but that's generally the way, the arc of the day. So the commissioner's responsibility will be to participate in the stakeholder interview, and then again, to have the option of reviewing the, you know, witnessing the presentation at the end of the two-day event.
You said around 4:00?
That's my best guess right now, yes.
For how long?
It'd be about an hour. I think they could wrap it up in an hour.
Okay.
And at that point, there will be no comments from the public, or not?
No, it's, they're, it's really intended to provide their, sort of, they've been taking the input. At some point, they develop a full report that they present to the city, something in the order of six to eight weeks later, and would expect that that would be, again, presented at a City Council meeting, opportunity for public feedback and comment, so.
So, when they come in, have you had several meetings with them already, so they sort of get the gist of the comments that are made from various groups within the city? Do they know sort of mentally where we've been heading relative to the thought process?
Well, we provided to them, a couple of things. One, the ULI staff and the chairperson of the TAP have met with the Economic Development Subcommittee a couple of times, which is the two council members and the chamber and city staff. So they met a couple of times in anticipation of the upcoming event. City staff actually worked fairly diligently at the end of last calendar year to put together what is, they call a briefing book, which is basically a collection of maps, demographic information, policy information, to help sort of frame the, frame the area and some of the issues. We also had to propose a scope of work, so it was clear kind of what questions, really what they are addressing, responding to questions that have been posed already in terms of formatting and terms of, you know, three or four very specific questions the city wants this TAP process to, to respond to or answer. And those have been posed already as part of the Economic Development Subcommittee, sort of frame those questions. As a stakeholder, I'll make sure you get the background materials that we've provided to everybody, so you're, again, understand some of the context as well. I haven't spoken to ULI much about the interview, in terms of the structure of the actual stakeholder interviews. I don't know how structured they'll be, or whether they'll be more of a free-form conversation. I really haven't talked to them about the actual interview. But to the extent, again, once we have more information, I'll make sure all the stakeholders are, are informed to make it as productive as possible for everybody, so.
Do you have any comments?
Given that Commissioner Cunningham has the expertise and has already stepped forward, I would like to make a motion that she be the representative for the Planning Commission, unless there is any objections. But I do want to note that I am interested, so if there is any further understudy, I'd be happy to step in.
I have nothing to say.
Well, I also think it would, I agree that we would like to have you represent us.
Thanks.
And, but I will be contacting you with some of my ideas.
Absolutely.
That's a great idea.
Actually, that touches on a point. Should we all get together and data and have our consultants presented to Commissioner Cunningham as our representative?
I would, you can handle this somewhat informally.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't know that you want to come in with a formal set of recommendations, given there is probably fluidity in what the interview process is like, and the stakeholder representative may not be in a position of, of kind of presenting a commission recommendation in a formal manner. So I would think you just keep it on an informal basis if you have comments. As a commissioner, to a fellow commissioner, that you have issues or comments or concerns you would want to see raised or discussed.
Oh, are we, or have you brought into the mix with this? The, just fell out of my head, the, the process that we had several years ago?
Project for Public Spaces, yes. PPS. And, and the sketches of kind of how we looked at re-envisioning the town center. That was part of the background information we provided along with all the, well, the recommendations or observations that would germane to the, that whole community park, shopping center interface area, yes. That was part of the background materials.
Right. Because that, that still sticks with me as one of the most powerful things that we've done in years, and then summarily ignored, which has been supremely disappointing to me. But, so if that's being resurrected for, for this process, I think it would be very valuable.
Yeah, I think, I think, yes, we have included that, obviously, to make sure there's, you know, that's foundational, whether some of those ideas kind of resurface or get modified a little bit based on current situation.
Well, I mean, there were a lot of people involved back then. I mean, so many citizens, you know, showed up to that two-day workshop and were very, very involved and gave a lot of their time and a lot of their, their thought process to this. And that came from all kinds of different areas in the city. So I would hate for that to have not been included, so thanks.
And also, people who have the institutional knowledge of sitting through that, I think it would be a very valuable asset in that regard, too, because I don't know how many people who may be stakeholders were as involved as you were and...
Right. Yeah. Who are the other people who are going to be representatives?
I haven't, in terms of generally, you know, there's property owner interest in Crocker Park, business interest in Crocker Park and the, the shopping center, a number of community interest groups, homeowners associations up on the ridge have all been invited to participate, school district representation, who am I missing? Again, the other, your fellow commissioners, I don't, I don't know individuals, there've only been maybe a handful of individuals from these various groups who have been, sort of, been presented to me. We only sent the request out right around the holidays, so I know it's kind of hard for people to get this together. We'll be pulling this together in the next week or so, and it probably about, my recollection, it was in excess of about 40 slots that they were going to accommodate in a, in a interview process.
Right. Yeah, no, it'd be nice to see the list, because, you know, if you could say, and these people were part of that, you know, so there's, you know, that interest brought forward all these years, seven, eight years ago now.
Yeah, that would be, we probably would have to go back to the signing sheets from the, which we have from the event seven years ago, but, yeah, it's a very interesting, you know, I, I...
Did you go to that event, John?
I was here, I was...
Yeah, it was, it was great. It was, was probably...
And actually, we included, I know that sketch that you, that you had a big hand in preparing was attached as part of the materials background.
Went home and drew all night, I did. Just came to me in a vision. Yeah, right.
Yeah, I was there as well.
Yeah. That was, that was great. That was really awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. With that, I will send the materials to, to you, and actually, for the whole commission, I'll send some of the...
That'd be great.
The generic background material.
That would be great.
Sort of frame the scope of work, just to get an idea of kind of, because again, I would expect ultimately, you know, if it's a positive outcome, that something that comes out of that will be presented to you in the form of whether it be general plan amendments or some sort of land use policy direction that the city needs to change. So the commission as a whole, you know, certainly you'll have the opportunity to weigh in this sort of, at a sort of a different stage of the process. And to the extent that everyone has the background information, I think that would be helpful.
Right. Are you going to send it to all the commissions and committees who are involved in?
I'll send it to the, I'll send it to this commission, and I'll send it to the staff liaisons of each individual commission. I'll leave it up to them if, if they feel that's appropriate, or, you know, they're, everyone has maybe a different level of interest, depending on their personal, you know, why they serve on a commission and how those interests overlap. I don't have a good sense for all of them, how they...
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So I think the next item was, just the, the Baylands EIR comment deadline is still scheduled to close on Friday, the 24th of January. So that will be the close of the comment period.
And then what?
And then, once the consultants have a sense of the magnitude and the scale of the comments that they're going to be needing to respond to, they'll come up with a draft schedule as to how long they think it's going to take them to respond. And at that point, we'll be, as soon as I have some sort of, sort of general timeframes, we'll be having a discussion both with the City Council about process forward and with, and with the commission to start talking about, you know, when, when a hearing schedule might start to kick in for you to, to take comment on this process. I don't, I don't want to throw out dates yet, because I don't really know right now when, when that would be appropriate. But I would suspect in, by mid-February, they should have a good, early to mid-February, they should have a good sense of whether it's 60 days or 260 days that they think it's going to take them to, to get through all the comments.
Okay.
Is there something else? Selection of officers. I don't want to mention that, no? Oh, and just for a reminder that in November, uh, not in November, February of this year, selection of, of commission officers is normally scheduled, and last year was an unusual year. I think it ended up being delayed.
Couple months.
Several months beyond its norm. But, anyway, that's something we will...
Do we have a date?
Pardon? We'll, we'll agendize that for the first meeting in February. I'm not sure what that date is. I don't know the meeting date. At the top of my head, maybe Ken can check. But, you know, that would be normally what, what we do.
13th.
13th?
13th, yeah.
That sounds right. So, and then if there's, it's up to the commission how you want to move forward on that, but...
That'll be earlier in that evening, or at the 7:30 slot?
The commission procedures call for at the end of that meeting, first, first meeting in February.
Okay, I'm just looking at my crazy calendar and don't want to miss anything.
And then I think Commissioner Reinhardt had some reporting on his subcommittee, but I'll do that over to Ken, because I think he sent Ken that email.
So I'll just read what he had, a couple of paragraphs here. So on his sustainability update, he says, "We completed the edits of the 10 principles as a team and are awaiting a cleaned-up draft from our consulting team this month. Next, we move into defining the KPIs, which I think is key performance indicators for each principle, and will convene again as a team in February. Once complete, these will be provided to the commissions and committees in some form yet to be determined."
So where is that first part, 20 what? Key performance indicators?
Oh, he, he says, "We completed the edits to the 10 principles as a team and are awaiting a cleaned-up draft from our consulting team."
Team, I assume he means the Sustainability Committee, which is council member and the open space and ecology, again, the commission members.
I would like to set up the next meeting, January 23rd, for a study, part of this meeting or all of the meeting as a study session for the general plan. And I would like some advice on how to go about doing that. Do you have any ideas?
Well, I think maybe we want to discuss, you know, maybe hear an open session from your, from your counterparts, what exactly this study session is intended to... I don't quite understand what the goal of the study session is, so it's hard for me to give you much advice or input until I understand what some of the objectives are.
This was at your... I feel that, I know that you would like to study the general plan as a group.
Right, that was pre-me, yeah. Pre-my time.
And just kind of do an overview of the different sections, kind of get an idea of how, if, can we start looking at it as, I have a question. Can we look at the sections of the general plan that are going to pertain to the EIR, draft EIR at this point, or do we need to wait?
I would encourage any deliberations or discussions you have about the Baylands should be in the context of public hearings on the Baylands project, any of our...
Correct.
So I wouldn't recommend that you have any standalone sessions on Baylands-related policies.
Right. That's what I was thinking. So, so I was thinking maybe we could just bring our general plans with us and kind of look, look through them and just, where do we start? General plan in California. It is, which is probably why we need to look at it, we are a planning commission.
I think we need a purpose and a, and a schedule to, to do something. I mean, where do we start?
Yeah, I think that's part of, and what you might want to discuss a little bit more is, kind of, and I assume you're talking about the '94 general plan, not the 2005 update that never really...
Really took off, yes.
...made it to fruition, so.
Right.
You know, certainly there's ways of providing an overview of, of the general plan at a very kind of 30,000-foot level in a short period of time, but if you're really interested in delving into this sort of element by element, I think Ken worked very closely with Bill and, I don't know how many commissioners, other than Commissioner Jamil, were actively involved in some of that review process that occurred from 2005 to 2007.
Seven or eight.
But, I mean, they spent, I would say, 40 meetings, literally going, is that about us there? Forty to 50 meetings going over this thing in a very high-order level of detail, so, you know, there's, there's probably something in between a 20-minute synopsis and 50 meetings, and probably you have to decide what exactly you're trying to achieve out of this.
I think maybe I will set up a meeting with this city staff and go through what, how we could set up this, our study session. But I think in terms of the Planning Commission being prepared to really see what the city wanted, I think we should look at it as a group.
I'm more than happy to look at anything. I'm just really confused as to what we're looking at. I mean, it's a, how long is this document?
500 pages, maybe.
Right. I mean, we're not going to look at the whole thing. No, no. If there's something specific that you're talking about, is there specific things? Because I'm just a little confused as to...
I will set up some meeting with city staff and then...
And identify some stuff?
Yes. Identify some things that I think would be pertinent for the commission to pay attention to.
Like parking?
That's one of them.
Yeah, I think we might want to, we could talk offline about whether or not we want to try to do this for the next meeting. It seems a little, we either be sort of plunging ahead based, not necessarily on a lot of other commissioner input, and if you want to do that, that's comfortable, I'm comfortable doing that, it's up to the chair, the chair's discretion at this point, or whether you want to... There's certainly going to be some more lag time between the close of the comment period and when you start Baylands hearing, so I don't know that you're, I think you'll have some other meetings in the late winter and early spring that would be available for these kind of activities. I just want to make sure it's, you know, everyone feels that this is a, you know, they're comfortable with what we're trying to achieve here, and whatever we put forward is helpful to the commission overall.
All right. Well, I'll set up some meeting, a meeting with the staff. Well, I'll set up some meeting, a meeting with the staff and come back next time with a recommendation for what we should be looking at. But I feel that it should be helpful for the Planning Commission to kind of look over some things before we move ahead on some other items. Okay? Anything else?
I have no comments. I have nothing else to say.
All right. Item I, and this is an adjournment to the regular meeting of January 23rd, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of the 23rd of January.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.